Father, we thank you that we can come together like this and that we can... Sorry, I'm sorry, I have to ask, I think people have perhaps unmuted, yes. So I'm going to mute you all again. That's it. And if you could not touch your microphones, that'd be wonderful. Okay, let's pray. Father, thank you that we can come together to look at how we're going to access your word, how we can get into your word and understand the things that you want us to know and the things about yourself that you've revealed to us. And Father, I pray that you would take this and bring your word alive to us, make us see that it is you speaking and that it's not a dead book written thousands of years ago, that it is a living book and that it will actually cut through bone and marrow, you say, and be able to judge the thoughts and the intentions of our heart and help us to see that that's not a terrible thing, that's not a bad thing, that's a wonderful thing. That you will be able to show us indeed that we have a new heart, that you have given us a new heart and that when Jeremiah said, "The heart is deceitful above all else and desperately wicked", that was not who we are. We are a new creation in Christ Jesus. You have given us a new heart, you have given us your spirit, and we are alive in Christ Jesus. And I just pray, Father, I really pray, that you would enable me to speak this truth and to give over what you want us to know tonight and for the next three weeks about how we study, how we come to your word and how we open it up for ourselves so that we can see and hear great and mighty things through it. And I just thank you, Lord, that you want us to do this and that you are drawing us in this way to yourself. And I pray, Father, that you would, by the end of this evening, that you would have started or boosted a fire in us that will just not be put out, that we will go on and on and on and into your word and into your word until we find more and more and more about you and about our wonderful Lord and Savior, Jesus. And it's in his name that I pray. Amen. So I wanted to begin, actually, this is a short course on how to study the Bible. So in some ways, it could be really quite dry because we're going to look at a method of studying. And so I thought I'd begin with a little bit of my own testimony, which is why I want to do this. The method that we're going to use is very simple. And obviously, you can take this method much further. I learned it from doing a series of Bible studies written by the woman that I first I met in my church in Japan when I became a Christian. And I've told this story many times, but she came to the church, an American woman from Chattanooga, Tennessee, and representing her own ministry, Precept Ministries. And she stood at the front of my church and she opened the Bible up to 1 John, chapter 1. And she began speaking from 1 John. And all I could think of when I looked at her and heard her speak was, "I want to know God like you know God, and I want to know his word like you know his word." And in a way that is miraculous to me now, a few months after that, God brought a teacher of her Bible studies to our church permanently. She was moved there with her husband. And she began to do these Bible studies and I learned how to do, how to access the Bible for myself. And so really, that's basically why I want to do this How to Study course. Because I want first of all to say that the reason that God brought that woman to Japan, her name is Kay Arthur, and the reason that I was put in serious, in-depth Bible study from the beginning is that God wanted me to know him. You know, that's the main thing about Bible study. And I think that's the thing that we don't often realise, or maybe no one tells us. You know, I don't do Bible study because I have to. I've never done Bible study because I have to. In fact, I'm the sort of person who doesn't do the things that you have to do. I've never done it because I have to. I've never done Bible study because I thought I'll lose points if I don't do it. I don't do it because it will give me a lot of knowledge about Christianity or about the church or even about God, actually. I do it because I want to know God. I want to know the God who wants me to know him. You know, that's what the Bible tells me. It tells me that God wants to know me. Wants me, sorry, to know him. He wants me to know him. Now, actually, if we never knew another thing, that would be an amazing statement, that the God who created all things would actually want me to know him. And I want to know him the way he knows me. You know, I want to know him by experience. I want to know him in relationship. I want to know him by fellowship, in-fellowship. I want to know how he thinks and how he feels and what he cares about and who he loves. And I want to know so that I can think the way he thinks and feel the way he feels and care about the people he cares about and love those people the way he loves them. Because I want to be like God. I want to know him and for him to change me to be like him. Because the little I know about him is enough to make me know that he is fantastic and that there is nothing that I wouldn't do to become more like him. So that's the first thing. I want to know how to live with God. I want to know how to love him, how to love who he loves, all of that stuff that I've just said. But I have to say that at the beginning of my Christian life, I didn't know any of that. And actually, I didn't think that way at the beginning. I can't honestly say that I realised any of it. Apart from that experience in church, when I looked at that woman and thought, "Well, I want to know God like you know God, and I want to know his word like you know his word", I really hadn't had an amazing rebirth. I had become a Christian in a relatively normal way. It was easy. Apart from one experience in church, which I might talk about at another time, when I first walked up and gave my life to Christ. Apart from that, it was a very normal, easy becoming a Christian. And there were some days that I really wondered if I actually had become a Christian. Because for a long time, life was more or less the same as it had been before, except for this understanding that I had come to, that Jesus really is God, that he really had come to earth to bridge the gap between mankind and God, to make it possible for us who are separated from God to come back to God. He really had lived a perfect life, paid the price for all of my sins and had been paid the price on a cross, had been buried and had been raised again, and that he was offering me eternal life if I believed in him. And I did believe that all of that was true. I knew that Jesus really had done all the things that he said he'd done. I knew that the gospel was true. But I also knew myself. I knew the fickleness of myself. I knew how easily distracted I could be. I knew how shallow my faith was, how shallow actually I am. I knew things about myself that caused me to think very often that I wouldn't continue to be a Christian, that I somehow, even though I knew that Jesus was true and even though that I knew that God loved me enough for Jesus to come and even though I had walked up in church and said, "I want to be a Christian", and prayed a prayer that actually supposedly gave my life to Christ, I still had all of these thoughts and I had no real assurance that I was what we call saved and that I would be saved forever. And I didn't really feel that I belonged to God and that I was his beloved child. I didn't have actual experience of that. And studying God's word has changed all of that. Studying God's word has anchored me. It has joined me to Christ in a way that I would never have felt or experienced otherwise. I may have been joined to Christ. I'm not saying that that transaction hadn't taken place. I'm not saying that I hadn't put my trust in Jesus. But I would never have known the assurance of my salvation. I don't think I would have had a lot of continuous joy without studying the word of God. I don't think I would have had continuous peace. I think that I would have continued as I was for the first couple of years. I would have been like this in my faith. I would have one minute felt that everything was fine and then the next minute thought, "Oh, no, call yourself a Christian? How can you be a Christian?" And all of it, all of it, all of my feelings about whether or not I was a Christian were all based on me. They were based on how I was behaving, what I was thinking, what I had done, what I hadn't done. You know, had I been to church, had I read my Bible, had I prayed? All those things would start to come in, apart from all the other stuff that the Lord was still having to clear out of my life. But I wouldn't have had the assurance that I was God's child unless I had actually studied Scripture for myself. And so when I did that, when I began to do the Bible studies that I went into, I started to understand and grow in my knowledge of God. I started to understand who God is and what he says and what his promises are to me. And as I understood that, I started to understand that my salvation does not depend on me. My salvation rests on the finished work of Jesus Christ, that he really is the author, the beginner, and the finisher of my faith. And that when I am not faithful, when I am not full of faith, when I am not even a quarter full of faith, he is faithful, for he can be nothing else. It is not my faith that will get me to heaven. It is the faithfulness of Christ that will take me home. And that understanding God gave me. He gave it to me through the pages of his word. He gave it to me in the matter-of-fact nuts and bolts of studying and finding a way to access the truth for myself. And that's really what this course is all about. I am not afraid. I am not anxious. I am not tossed here and there by every wind of doctrine. I am not, you know, bowled over by the circumstances of my life. I am able to keep my eyes on Jesus, not all the time. I'm still a fickle, shallow, distracted human being. But in all of that, God has led me and led me and led me and focused my attention on who he is rather than on who I am. And that, as I say, has anchored me in my faith and it has made me free. It has done exactly what Jesus said it would do in John 8, verse 31. And I'm just throwing that in, that's not in my notes, but John 8:31. "Jesus turns to the Jews that have been following him." And in John, chapter 8, verse 31, he says, it's John writes, "And Jesus said to those Jews who had believed in him..." So that's like people like me, I'm not a Jew, but I had believed in him. "If you continue in my word, then you are truly my disciples, and you will know the truth, and the truth will make you free." And I am testimony to the reality of that promise. I know truth and that truth has made me free. And it's a process and it takes time and it takes effort, but it is a way of strengthening and feeding and growing, growing who you are in Christ so that the things that come against every human being, the trials and the difficulties and the circumstances and the sorrow and the pain and the tragedies that come against us, we are able to stand firm on the basis of who Jesus is, who God is. And that's really what I wanted to, why I wanted to do this study. When I first was taught the method, you know, as you probably already guessed from what I've told you about myself, I didn't really want to do it, at least not the way it was supposed to be done. You know, I honestly thought that I would understand the Bible with no problem. You know, I mean, it was me after all, I would understand it. I would know what God was saying. I didn't need to go through any ridiculous method as I thought of it at the time. I didn't need to do the nuts and bolts of what I was being told. But, and I was put into, as I say, into kind of fairly serious Bible study straight away. And what that involved was doing one hour's homework five days a week and then getting together with a group of people and discussing, being led through a discussion by the facilitator and then watching a video of the woman I'd seen in church who was teaching from what we had, from what we'd been studying. And I loved the video. I just loved the video. And I actually quite liked the discussion and I always had loads to say. But I realised, after, actually not too long, I realised that I just wasn't getting what other people were getting because I wasn't doing what they had done. I wasn't putting in the time to do the basics of Bible study. I just thought somehow I was going to get it all and understand it all. And as I say, after a while, I realised I really wasn't. And basically, what I realised, because I wasn't doing Bible study the way I was being told to do it, I was actually understanding about God from my own common sense. I was basing my understanding of who God is from my kind of ethical, moral background. And I really made so many mistakes because our common sense and our morals and ethics and our philosophies are very often the reverse, the complete reverse of who God is and the way he wants us to live. And so it wasn't until really I took the time to slow down and do the study the way I was being told to do it, that I actually began to hear what God was saying. And he was saying it to me. And what happened when that happened was that the Bible exploded into life for me. It just exploded before my eyes. And I was able to see and hear things of God that I never thought I would ever know. And, you know, I had been discipled at the beginning of my Christian life. I know I've said this before. A friend that I knew already when I became a Christian, when I walked up in church, she phoned me up and said, "You've probably got loads of questions, Anne, so, you know, would you like to get together for a coffee?" And every week for about 18 months, two years, she answered my questions. She led me through what, Navigators Bible Study. Many of you all know about Navigators. They do some really good Bible studies. And the one that she, or the two that she led me through, there were two parts of the same study, well, really, basically, how now, what it was like to be a Christian and what you do when you're a Christian. For example, I had to memorise Scripture. And on the first course, you had to spend half a day in prayer on your own. And then in the second course, you had to spend the whole day in prayer. So basically, what that study taught me was how to be a Christian and what Christians did. But the method that was taught to me about the Bible taught me who God is and who I am because I'm his child. And when the Bible, as I say, exploded in front of me, I began to understand, as I think I said just a bit earlier, that someone like me could actually hear from God. And, you know, right up front, I want to tell you, I left school at 16. I was ridiculous. Even when I was a teenager, I thought I knew everything and I knew nothing. I left school at 16. I moved out of my parents' home at 17. Even though I had a very happy childhood, lovely parents, two lovely sisters, I decided I wanted to live in London. I wanted the high life. And I moved to London when I was 17. And so I am not academic. Everything I know, I read a lot, I've always loved to read, but everything I know, I only know because I've read it from somebody else. I didn't go to college. I didn't go to university. I have no letters after my name. I have never been to theological college. I have never been to seminary. I've thought about it a couple of times, but it's never happened. So everything I know about God, I know from the word. Everything. And if I, if someone like me can know God through his word, then everyone who's listening can know God through his word. Yeah. So that's what this is for. It was a long preamble, I suppose, to say that that's what this course is for. And the reason I've told you all of what I've told you, ending in what I've just told you, that I left school at 16 and have always regressed it, I have to say, but is to let you know that whoever you are and whatever you've done or whatever you haven't done, God wants you to know him. And he just doesn't want you to know about him. He wants you to know his character and his thinking and how he feels about things. And he wants you to know who he cares about and how he cares and who he loves and what that love looks like. He wants you to know that. And that's the first, most basic understanding of Bible study. As I said right in the beginning, you're not doing Bible study because you have to. You're not doing Bible study because it's what Christians are supposed to do. You're doing Bible study because God wants you to know him. And in the knowing of God, you will become a strong advocate, ambassador for the Lord Jesus Christ. You will become someone that people turn to because you are someone who knows God. So first things first, I said that God wants us to know him. And you've listened and I hope you've nodded. And then you have to ask yourself, "Well, actually, is that true? Does God really want me to know him? How does she know that?" And the reason I know that is because there are various scriptures that tell me that. I'm just going to give you a lot of scriptures and then a little bit later, we're going to go through and work through some sections of Scripture. So Romans, chapter 1, verse 19 to 20. If you're not quick at moving through your Bible, that's okay. Just write the scripture down, Romans 1, verse 19 and 20. "Because that which is known about God is evident within them," that's people, "for God made it evident to them; for since the creation of the world, his invisible attributes, his eternal power and divine nature have been clearly seen, being understood through what has been made, so that they are without excuse." So those two sentences say that God made evident within them, made himself known within humans. And that since the creation of the world, human beings have been able to see his eternal power, his divine nature, in the creation itself. So if God doesn't want to be known, why did he put knowledge of himself within every human being? And if he didn't want to be known, why did he create a world that shows us who he is? So that's just a question. That's where I base my understanding that God wants to be known. Ecclesiastes 3, verse 11. "God has set eternity in the hearts of men, in the hearts of people." God has deliberately placed within every human being an understanding that this life is not all there is, that there's more, that there's more outside of our understanding. Why? Because God wants to be known. John, chapter 1, John's Gospel, chapter 1, verse 9 to 13. "There was the true light, which coming into the world enlightens every man. He was in the world, and the world was made through him, and the world did not know him. He came to his own, and those who were his own did not receive him; but as many as received him, to them he gave the right to become children of God, even to those who believe in his name, who were born not of blood, nor of the will of the flesh, nor of the will of man, but of God. And the word became flesh and dwelt among us; and we saw his glory, glory as of the only begotten of the Father, full of grace and truth." Now, I didn't read the first nine, eight verses in the beginning. Verse 1, "In the beginning was the word, and the word was with God, and the word was God. All things that came into being came into being through him; and apart from him, nothing that came into being came into being. In him was life, and that life was the light of men." This is talking about Jesus, verse 14. "And the word became flesh and dwelt among us; and we saw his glory." John is writing about Jesus Christ and he's saying, "He is the word of God. He became flesh." But the thing that I'm talking about, the reason that I know that God wants us to know him is that we are told he was in, he was the true light, "which coming into the world enlightens every man, every person." Why did Jesus take on flesh? Why did the Son of God, why did God himself come to the planet? Why did he live here? Why did he live for 33 years on this planet? Why is he the light that enlightens every man? Because God wants to be known. He wants to be known. Look at Psalm 19, verse 7 to 11, Psalm 19, verse 7 to 11. "The law of the Lord is perfect, restoring the soul; the testimony of the Lord is sure, making wise simple. The precepts of the Lord are right, rejoicing the heart; the commandment of the Lord is pure, enlightening the eyes; the fear of the Lord is clean, enduring forever; the judgments of the Lord are true, they are righteous altogether; they are more desirable than gold, yes, than much fine gold, sweeter also than honey and the drippings of the honeycomb. Moreover, by them your servant is warned; in keeping them there is great reward." What's this talking about? God's word. God's word is "perfect, restoring the soul." His testimony is "sure, making wise the simple." His precepts are "right, rejoicing the heart." Go on and on and on. How do I know God wants us to know him? Because he wrote a whole book about himself, because he wrote a book to tell us about himself. Jeremiah, chapter 15, verse 16, Jeremiah 15, verse 16. Jeremiah, verse 16. "Your words were found, and I ate them; and your words became for me a joy and the delight of my heart; for I have been called by your name, O Lord God of hosts." This is Jeremiah. "I found your words, and I ate them; and they have become the delight of my heart." How could a man, Jeremiah, find the words of God? Only if God revealed them to him. Why did he reveal them to Jeremiah? Because he wanted Jeremiah to know him. And through Jeremiah, he wanted you and I to know him. Someone's just asked me for the Romans reference. The Romans reference was Romans 1, verse 19 and 20. So God spoke, he spoke into the people who wrote this Bible down in order for us to know him. Jeremiah says, "Your words were found, and I ate them." The Bible came from God. He wants us to know him and he wants us to know his plan and his purpose and his will. "The Bible came from God," 2 Samuel 23, verse 2. 2 Samuel 23, verse 2. Again, don't worry about rushing to it. If you can't get to it, just write the reference down. And at the end, actually, if you couldn't get all of these references, just send us an email to desiringtruth@icloud.com and we will send you, I'll send you a list of the scriptures that we're going to talk about. 2 Samuel 23, verse 2. "The Spirit of the Lord spoke by me, and his word was on my tongue." Verse 1 is, "Now these are the last words of David, King David." And then verse 2, "The Spirit of the Lord spoke by me, and his word was on my tongue." Can you hear what David is saying? He's saying, "God spoke by me." "His words are the words I spoke." Why did God do that? Because he wanted us to know him. Why did God do that? Because He wanted us to know Him. Mark twelve, thirty-six, Mark, chapter twelve, verse thirty-six. "David himself said, by the Holy Spirit, 'The Lord said to my lord, Sit at my right hand until I have put your enemies beneath your feet.' David himself said, in the Holy Spirit or by the Holy Spirit." This is Jesus speaking about David and saying that, that God spoke in and through David. That David wrote down His words. And then Acts, chapter one, verse sixteen, Acts one, verse sixteen. "Brethren, the scripture had to be fulfilled, which the Holy Spirit foretold by the mouth of David concerning Judas, who became a guide to those who arrested Jesus." So again, the confirmation in, in the New Testament, Peter speaking in Acts, chapter one, of, of the fact that David wrote down the truth about Judas. He talked about the fact that Jesus would be betrayed, and God gave him that information by the Spirit. And then look at First Peter, chapter one, I'm sorry, Second Peter, Second Peter, chapter one, verse twenty and twenty-one. "But know this, first of all, that no prophecy of scripture is a matter of one's own interpretation; for no prophecy was ever made by an act of human will, but men moved by the Holy Spirit spoke from God." That's Peter again in the letters. Now, you're probably, I mean, I would think for the most part, people here, you already know these things are true. But the thing is, you have to know why you know them. You know, we have a lot of knowledge and we have a lot of what we call wisdom and understanding, and we spell that out a lot. But very often, that's a conglomeration of what we think we know and what we've brought to our understanding or to our scripture reading is, very often, it's what we can, we understand from our common sense, our philosophy, from what someone told us, from what our parents, how our parents brought us up, what they said to us. And so we have to be sure that what we say and what we know about God is actually the truth. And it's only by knowing the scriptures, only by knowing the word of God and understanding it in exactly the way it is meant, that we can really be sure that what we're standing on, what we're basing our lives on, what our foundation is, is actually true. Because it's not a half-truth that will make you free. It's not, you know, just, well, you know, I, I do know this, I'm not quite sure about that, but that won't make you free. That will keep you tossed about from one, one problem to another problem. You and I need to know the truth of the word, because the word of God in and of itself has power. Isaiah fifty-five, verse ten, Isaiah, in the Old Testament, Isaiah fifty-five, verse ten. "For as the rain and the snow come down from heaven, and do not return there without watering the earth and making it bare and sprout, and furnishing seed to the sower and bread to the eater, so will my word be, which goes forth from my mouth; it will not return to be empty without accomplishing what I desire and without succeeding in the matter for which I sent it." God's word has power. It's only God's word that has power. Your words don't have any power. You might be able to hurt someone and you might be able to, you know, make them feel bad and, but your words have no power to create life. God's word has power to create life. How do I know that? Genesis one. Genesis one, "In the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth." How did He do it? "Then God said, 'Let there be light,' and there was light." And all the way down through Genesis, chapter one, God spoke. And actually, Genesis one, verse three, when you read it in the original language, where we, where we read, "Then God said, 'Let there be light,'" actually, the original Hebrew says, "God said, 'light,' and there was light." This is the word of God. God's word creates. His word has power. His word never returns empty without accomplishing the purpose for which He sent it. God sent the gospel of Jesus Christ to you. He sent someone to tell you the gospel. Do you know why? Because He wanted to give you life. He wanted to give you life, eternal life. And He has written this book to you, sixty-six books to you, to give you the abundant life that Jesus promised He came to give. Jesus, in John, chapter ten, verse ten, "I came that you might have life and life abundant." So all these people speaking, David speaking by the word of God, Jesus confirming that, Peter saying that no prophet spoke by his own understanding, but by, you know, by the word of the Lord coming to them. First Samuel, chapter two, twenty, verse twenty-seven, First Kings, chapter seventeen, verse twenty-four, Deuteronomy, twenty-nine, verse twenty-nine, the secret things, this is Deuteronomy, twenty-nine, twenty-nine. The secret things belong to God, but the revealed things belong to us. God has revealed things to His people. He has revealed Himself to His people because He wants you to know Him. The Old Testament was written through men inspired by the Holy Spirit. And in the New Testament, it's exactly the same. Jesus said in John fourteen, verse twenty-six, John fourteen, verse twenty-six. "But the Helper, the Holy Spirit, whom the Father will send in my name, He will teach you all things and bring to your remembrance all that I said to you." And in Second Timothy, chapter three, verse sixteen to seventeen, Second Timothy, chapter three, sixteen to seventeen. "All scripture is inspired by God and profitable for teaching, for reproof, for correction, for training in righteousness, so that the person of God may be adequate, equipped for every good work." The purpose of the word of God is that you know God and that you are equipped for the work that He has for you to do. All scripture is authored by God, inspired by God, written down by men as they were led by the Holy Spirit. And it follows, of course, it follows that if eternal life is knowing God and knowing Jesus, John seventeen, verse seventeen, Jesus said, "And this is eternal life, that they might know you, the one true God, and Jesus Christ whom He has sent." If that is true, that knowing God and knowing Christ is eternal life, then it absolutely follows that we, to know God is God's way of giving us life. To know Christ by experience, the word know in, in the Greek language, always meant by experience. So to know God is to know Him by experience, in relationship, in fellowship. If God wants us to know Him so that we might have eternal life, then it makes absolute sense that He would have written down His word to us through all of those men who wrote it down over the course of three thousand years. It makes absolute sense that He would have recorded His message to human beings. And that's what we call the Bible. And I'm stressing all of this and going on for so long about it because the Bible, the word of God, is under such attack and has always been. And the reason it is under attack is that it is the word of God. And it will be ridiculed and mocked, and people will say, "You can't really believe that. Do you really think about that? Oh my goodness, that's such an old book." But this book is life. It is life. And you have to, right at the beginning of this very short course, just make it your business to believe, to trust that God knows you. He knows exactly how to speak to you, and He has in ages past already written this letter to you. I mean, you can call it many things. You can call it an instruction manual for life. You can call it, you can call it a love letter. "God has written a letter of love to you and to me." Why? Because His whole purpose in drawing us to Himself and sending His Son, Jesus, was so that we might be in relationship and fellowship with Him. And He knows that in order for that to happen, we have to know who He is, how He thinks, how He cares, how He loves, and what He wants us to be like in, in the way that we imitate Him. So it follows then, that if, if all of that is true, and God wrote this Bible, which He did, and got people to write it down, inspired by the Holy Spirit, if that is true, then we should or would want to, if we believe that, we would surely want to know a little bit about the God who has described Himself in these pages. So there are, of course, different genres in the Bible. It's not all the same type of literature. There is historical narrative, and a large part of the Old Testament is historical narrative. Actually, the history of the nation of Israel. And Acts in the New Testament is also historical narrative. These things actually took place, and Luke, the physician, actually recorded them. It is a historic, it's a book of history. It's a book of history, and it's the history of the early church and the way that God used men and women to bring about the spread of the gospel after the death and resurrection of Jesus Christ. So you have historical narrative, you have poetry in the Psalms, of course, and in some of the other historical books, we get some poetry, some songs and some poems in there. You have wisdom, the wisdom literature, others, Proverbs and Job and Ecclesiastes. And, and that's really about, you know, the practical purpose or the practical way to live and the meaning of life. And, and it's what they call wisdom literature. You have prophecy. Four major prophets in the Old Testament and twelve minor prophets, all speaking directly the word of God as they heard it, speaking it out and, and having it written down or writing it down themselves. That sixteen prophets in the Old Testament. We've got the Gospels, which is a biographical literature. It's, they're biographies of Jesus. Also historical, because they are relating events that actually took place, but essentially a biography of Jesus. There are the epistles, the letters to twenty-one churches, and there is the eschatological, end times, future literature, revelation and parts of some of the, the Old Testament prophets, particularly Daniel, are talking about the end times. So the reason I'm saying all of that is that we've got a library here. This is a library. This isn't one book. It's sixty-six chapters, sixty-six books, and it's a library of books. And, and we can't read them all the same because they're written in different ways. And they're written kind of, although they're all authored by God, He used different people to write them down, so there'll be different nuances. As I've just said, the Gospels are biographies. And there were four different people who wrote the biography of Jesus. And so what you'll find is that when you read the Gospel of John and the Gospel of Matthew, you will see Jesus from two different perspectives. And Mark and Luke the same. You'll see a different perspective of Jesus. And it's almost like you're looking at a diamond or a precious stone, and you're seeing one facet of that stone from the angle of the person who wrote it down. God inspired a particular person, a specific person at a specific time to write it. So it's absolutely natural that He did that in that way. He would show us different things about Jesus. So we have a complete picture of Jesus, as complete as human words could give us. We have a complete picture of Jesus in the four Gospels. So that means when you read them, you should expect to see some differences, some slight differences, some things that are emphasized, some things emphasized by John, not emphasized by Mark, and so on. Each gospel writer, writing the biography of Jesus from his perspective, God through the man writing the biography of Jesus. The Bible was written in human language, in human language, and it was written in a specific human language in the time it was written. So by far, the majority of the New Testament is written in Koine Greek, which is common Greek, not classical Greek, common Greek. The Old Testament, by far, the majority of it, apart from sections in Daniel, are written in Hebrew, the language of the Israelites. And so it was written in a, in a human language into a culture at a specific time and in a specific place, and that culture and that language is not ours. So when we come to understand or to, to read this, we have to know that this was written to a specific people at a specific time into a specific culture. But that God wrote it to me and you and all believers across time. So therefore, although I know that it was written into a particular culture, I also know that God wants everyone to understand it. I've already said, "God wants us to know Him." So even though it was written in Hebrew into an Israelite culture, into the culture of the, that part of the world at that time, I can know that there is, there are things there that are transportable spiritually to me, living in my culture, speaking my language in this time. So God wants everyone to understand His word. He made it simple enough for everyone to understand it, whoever they are, wherever they came from. And He, He wrote it so that we would come into fellowship with Him and grow in that fellowship with Him through knowing Him through His word, that we might know Jesus and know the Creator of our, of our being. I've already said that the purpose of the Bible is that we would know God and that Jesus came to reveal God to us. I don't know that I gave you scriptures for that, but I'm going to give you some. Colossians, chapter one, verse thirteen to twenty. Colossians, chapter one, thirteen to twenty. Absolutely fantastic chapter about Jesus, but actually, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start in verse thirteen. "For he rescued, he, God, rescued us from the domain of darkness and transferred us to the kingdom of his beloved Son, in whom we have redemption, the forgiveness of sins. He is the image of the invisible God, the firstborn of all creation; for by him all things were created, both in heavens and on earth, visible and invisible, whether thrones or dominions or rulers or authorities; all things have been created through him and for him. He is before all things, and in him all things hold together." And then go over to chapter two, maybe even just across the page for you, chapter two, verse nine. "For in him Christ all the fulness of deity dwells in bodily form; in him all of the fulness of the godhead dwells in bodily form." Jesus is God. He revealed God to us. He took on, God took on flesh and walked the planet to reveal who God is, what He likes, what He loves, what He cares about, how, you know, how He feels, how He thinks. Jesus came to do that for us. And these verses, John fourteen, John, chapter fourteen, verse nine, John fourteen, verse nine. Jesus talking to Philip. Philip says to him, "Lord, show us the Father, and it's enough for us." And Jesus says to him, "Have I been with you so long, and yet you have not come to know me, Philip? He who has seen me has seen the Father." How can you say, "Show us the Father"? Jesus Himself saying, "If you've seen me, you've seen God. If you've heard me, you've heard God." I only do, later on, he'll say, "I only do the things that I hear my father, I only do the things I see my father doing and say the things I hear my father saying." I've just had two notes from very kind people telling me it's five to eight. Thank you. We'll take a break. Father, thank you. Thank you that you tell us these things and you show us these things in your word because you do want us to know you. And thank you that, for, for the reason of the scriptures. And thank you that, that, for, for the reason of the scriptures I've given, I can know that you want me to know you. Um, and, uh, and really because Jesus came, we can know that you want us to, to come back to you. Um, so many examples in scripture, Lord, of your heart and how you want each one of us, every person who's ever lived, you have wanted. Peter tells us that you didn't, you don't want any to perish, but all to come to repentance. And so, um, we trust that, Lord, and we, we trust that your heart is a heart of love and that you do want every single person to come to know you through the Lord Jesus. And that's why Jesus came. And so, Lord, I ask you now to give me, uh, the correct words to say and to, to put across, um, the rest of what I want to say tonight in a way that is clear. And, um, and I thank you, Father, because that's what you promise that you will do. Um, that you will answer a prayer prayed according to your will and according to your name. And, um, if it's true that you want people to know you, then surely you will help me to explain clearly um, a way to do that. And so I thank you, Father, in advance for what you will do, in Jesus' name, amen. So, um, I've said that there are different, uh, genres of literature. Uh, I've said that, um, the, the word of God was inspired by God, written by human, uh, human writers at particular times into a particular culture. And as Paula's just said, that makes it, uh, very important that we understand the culture in which it was written and that we understand what we can take from the, the, what was written and actually, um, lay hold of for ourselves. And, uh, hopefully in the course of the next, uh, three weeks after tonight, we will go through some of that and be able to answer that, um, clearly. So, um, because through Jesus, I see God, or Jesus says that if you've seen me, you've seen the Father. And in John chapter five and chapter eight and various other places in John's Gospel, it's recorded that Jesus will say, as I said just before the break, um, that I only do what I see the Father doing and I only say what I hear the Father saying. So we can know that Jesus is the representative of God. He is actually God. I mean, in Colossians chapter one, he is the image of the invisible God. And in chapter two, in him, all the fullness of deity dwells in bodily form. So we can know that Jesus Christ is the revelation, the outward manifestation on God, that he came to show who God is. And, uh, if that's true, if it's true that Jesus is the way that God, uh, represented himself to man, if he showed himself to man in, in the, um, in the form of Jesus, if, if that's true, then what Jesus came to do is surely the central focus of the entire Bible. If God wants to be known, if he's revealed himself to us, if he wants us to know him, then, um, if he himself has come in the form of his son, who lived a perfect life and then died, uh, on the cross and was resurrected, that point must be the focal point of all of scripture. Because that in Jesus is the way God has revealed himself in human form to us. And so, um, uh, that tells me that, that Jesus must be the focus of the whole Bible. And, um, when we come into the, the family of God, we are told in scripture, when we put our trust in Jesus, we come into the family of God. And, um, and he gives us his Holy Spirit himself, he gives us himself in the form of his spirit. And we're told in Ephesians, which we're going to look at in a little bit, that that, that the, the down, that the Holy Spirit is given to us as a down payment, as a pledge, a guarantee of an inheritance that we will receive when we go to be with God. So, um, so here we have the triune God, Father, Son and Holy Spirit. The Father has chosen to reveal himself in his Son, who came and took on flesh and lived a human life and died in our place and was resurrected. And those who put their trust in this Jesus, who died for the whole world, God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten Son, John three sixteen. Those who put their trust in Jesus, receive the Spirit of Christ, the Spirit of God. And the Spirit enables us to understand the scripture, understand the things of God. And, um, and, and when all of that happens, the Spirit shows us and, and the word of God shows us that the focus of the entire plan of God, the focus of the Bible is Jesus Christ, him who died and was buried and was raised again on the third day. The way that God brings us into relationship with him is through Jesus. The way he has revealed himself to us is through Jesus. The Holy Spirit points us to the things of Jesus. The Holy Spirit wrote about Jesus. And so we can know that the whole of the Bible, in, in, in almost every section, well, in every section and on almost every page of the Bible, we should be able to see something about God that would point us to Jesus. And in that way, the whole Bible is redemptive. It is, the purpose of it is to redeem people back to God, to, to bring people out of one world of darkness into the world of light that Jesus came to inaugurate. And, um, and so in all of its genres, poetry, history, uh, prophecy, uh, the end times, future, the future scenarios, the gospel biographies, in all of the genres of the Bible, we should be seeing Jesus Christ portrayed, Jesus Christ exalted. And so when we're looking through the scriptures, one of the first and foremost things to do is to see what does this tell me about God? What does this tell me about Jesus? What, what about it can I learn about God? Before I go into some specifics, I use the New American Standard Translation. There are many translations. I use this one. I use it because it is a word-for-word translation. And because I want to be able to act-
I can't see you now either. Oh, there you are.
I was disconnected briefly.
Yeah.
I don't know why, or at least I thought I was disconnected.
Are you knocking it at all, Anne?
No, I am supposedly doing, uh, pinning my video. I haven't, I haven't, um, touched anything or knocked anything or, anyway. Okay, here we are. So, um, I use the NASB, um, New American Standard. It's a word-for-word translation. There are many different translations and some of them are, are good, not this NASB, but I use this because I want to be able to see what the original word meant, um, when it was written. And if you read a translation that is a phrase-by-phrase translation, you, you can't do that. And so because the Bible was written in a specific language at a specific time, I want to be able to understand what that meant at that time, what that word meant at that time. Um, so, uh, yeah, so let's move on. Um, I've said that, um, the Bible tells me about God. And one way that it does that is that it uses different names for God. Um, so God himself, when he got people to write it down, he introduced himself to people in, using a different name. And the word name in scripture means character. It has the connotation of character. And so when God uses a name for himself in scripture, he is telling us something about his character. Um, John chapter one, I've already quoted that, in the beginning was the word and the word was with God and the word was God. He was in the beginning with God. So, um, God is telling us about himself in those verses. He's telling us that the word, and the word became flesh and dwells among us. Word is, is God, the word is God. So there's something about God in that first four verses of John's Gospel, John chapter one, verse one to four, that tells us something about his character. In him was light. So we know that God is a God of light. And then in, in, in verse four, and that light was the life of men. So God is light and he, and that light is life to men. So those things that you, when you read through scripture and you're starting to look at, okay, how can I study this? One of the very first things to do is notice when the word God is used, when the word Jesus is used, and write down what you learn about God and what you learn about Jesus. Write a list, I mean, be really simple, just write a list. And, um, and, and write it in, in sentence form, what I learned about God. For example, Proverbs chapter eighteen, verse ten says, "The name of the Lord is a strong tower; the righteous run into it and are safe." What do you learn about God from that verse? You learn that his name is a strong tower. What's a strong tower? A strong tower is a safe place. Who can come into that safe place? Only the righteous. When they come in, what happens to the righteous? They are saved. "The name of the Lord is a strong tower; the righteous run into it and are saved." Now, I don't know yet if the righteous is describing me. I have to find another place in scripture which tells me who is righteous. But one thing I do know is that for the righteous, God is a safe place. He is a refuge in times of trouble. So just from John chapter one, verse one to four, I know that Jesus is the word of God. He is light and he is life. And I know that God is a strong tower, he's a refuge and he is safety. So I know some things about God just from asking, you know, just from looking at what can I see about God? For example, Judges, chapter six, verse twenty-four, would you go there? Judges, chapter six, verse twenty-four. The Lord comes to Gideon, um, and, um, asks him to do some stuff for him. Uh, Judges, chapter six, let's go there. Verse twenty-four. And in that exchange, uh, Gideon writes, um, "Then Gideon built an altar to the Lord and named it, 'The Lord is Peace.'" Today, to this day, is still called, is still in Ophra of the Abizharites. So Gideon had a whole exchange with God and it will go on for another chapter or two. Um, and Gideon builds an altar and he names it, "The Lord is Peace." So what do I know about God? I know that God is peace. He names it in the Hebrew, Jehovah Shalom. Now, it's not just, uh, we have the Lord is peace, it sounds like a nice sentence and, um, but, but in the Hebrew, the name for Lord, the word for Lord is Jehovah. And Jehovah in Hebrew means self-existent, needing no one. So I know from what God has revealed himself through Gideon and through the pages of Judges, I know that God is a self-existent God. I know that he needs nothing and no one to exist. I know that he is and that he always will be. He was and he is and he is to come. He is Alpha and Omega, he is the beginning and the end. He is the eternal God. He is, he is. No one created him. He just simply is. And I know that Jehovah, if I go back through the pages of scripture, I find that the name Jehovah is the name that God calls his memorial name to his people, Israel. That he uses that name as a memorial to them so that they always remember that he is self-existent, needing no one, never-ending God. And that is the name that he chooses to give to his people, Israel, as his memorial name. He is and of, he is in and of himself enough. He doesn't need anything else to continue. He doesn't need anything else to exist. He simply is. And I know that through the definition of Jehovah. That is exactly what Jehovah meant at that time, in that language, to those people. Now, if that's true of God, if he is self-existent and needs no one and is eternal and is continuing, and if Jehovah is the memorial name that he gave to his people, Israel, I can know many things. I can know that God is and always will be and that the God who was then is the God who is now. And I can know that Jesus is that God and that Jesus is the one who said, "He came to die for me, who offers me salvation." So I can take from, from Judges, chapter six, verse twenty-four, I can know that my God is peace. He is self-existent, needing no one, self-existent peace. I can know that shalom means peace and that in God is peace. So I can know that when I am in him, when the Bible describes me as being in Christ Jesus, I can know that I am in peace. These are things that you kind of build up as you go through. But the first and the most basic thing when you read scripture, as I said, is look for every single name of God, look for every name and find out what that meant in the original language. Make a list, make a list, you'll never get to the end of it. The name of God is all over the scriptures. Look at every time you see the name of Jesus, make a list of what you see. And you will never get to the end of it. Because he is described in so many different ways through scripture. So when I look at the name Jehovah and I say, I said, he's, he's covenant name of God. Look at Exodus, chapter three, verse thirteen to fifteen. He tells Moses that this is his memorial name to all generations. This is the name that for all generations, I am going to be remembered as. I am Jehovah. So simply from knowing that, just knowing his name, I can make a lot of, I can make a quite a long list of what I know about God. And the thing is, what difference does it make to me that God is peace? I mean, what difference does it make to you to know that God is self-existent? That he simply is and always will be? And that that God is, is peace himself, he is peace. And now add that together to the, the, the thing you wrote about from Proverbs eighteen, verse ten. "The name of the Lord is a strong tower; the righteous run into it and are saved." And then understand that God, the God who is peace, is also a strong tower and that you can run into him, into him. And when you run into the stra- strong tower that is God, you run into peace. And you run into unending, self-existent peace, a peace that exists no matter what's going on anywhere else. So he is peace. When I look up the word shalom in the original language, in Hebrew, I find that it means health, it means security, it means tranquility, it means all the things that we would class in terms of peace. That's what it means. And I can take that truth about God and I can, um, look it up in my Bible dictionaries. I can look up Jehovah and I can look up peace and I can look up the strong tower. I can look up everything else and I can understand what that meant then. And then I can understand, does that mean the same today? And, you know, often I find that the, what it means today to me is amplified by knowing what it meant then. I'm just going to show you a couple of books that I use, um, in case you want to look at them up for yourselves. I use the Complete Word Study Old Testament Dictionary, which is the whole Old Testament. And above every word, there is a number, which is a strong's number, which is a concordance. So I can then go to a concordance, which I will show you here, which is an even bigger book. And, uh, it's a concordance and I can look up every word in scripture in the, uh, in, in, and I can see where every place it's, it's used in scripture. And I can look up at the back of the book what it means, what the definition of that word meant. That's Greek and Hebrew. So I have one of these books, this is my Old Testament one, and I have a New Testament one, exactly the same. It's the New Testament written out with the strong's number above it so that I can access the definition of that Hebrew or Greek word. You don't have to have those books online, you can go now and get lots of dictionaries and lots of information online. But very often, words didn't mean then what they mean now. And so it's important to understand what the word meant when it was written. So the Bible tells me about God and it tells me about Jesus. And it also shows me, uh, tells me how I became part of his family. John chapter one, verse eleven and twelve. "And as many, he came to his own, but his own did not receive him, so he came to Israel, but they didn't receive him. But to as many as received him, he gave the right to become children of God." So I can know I have received Christ Jesus and therefore I have become a child of God. So I can know I have received Christ Jesus and therefore I have become a child of God. And as a child of God, I can now access the scriptures on that understanding. So 2 Corinthians, chapter five, verse seventeen, tells me, "If anyone is in Christ, he is a new creature; the old is gone and the new has come." What does that mean? You know, right? Take that verse on its own and just ask the questions. What does that actually mean? If anyone is in Christ, in Christ, how do I get into Christ? If I am in Christ, I am a new creation. What does that mean? It means the old is gone and the new has come. I am not who I was. I am a new being. I have been, as Jesus says in John, chapter three, born again. I am now a new creation. And if you go on in 2 Corinthians, chapter five, and you get to verse twenty-one, "He, God, made him, Jesus, who knew no sin, to be sin on my behalf, that I might become the righteousness of God in him." Now, what do you know about yourself if you're in Christ? You are a new creation. Who you were is gone. You are now in Christ Jesus. And what God is doing is making you become the righteousness of God in him. You are becoming more and more and more righteous. Of course, there are other things that are added to that, but just for that one verse, just take these verses and ask questions and that's what I'm going to get to. When you study, how you study is you ask questions of what you read. I mean, you are, you, you come to the Bible, you know, in a, in, with a certain attitude that you want to hear from God. You're thankful that you can. You come praying that you're going to have the understanding. You come thanking him that he will give it to you. You come humbly because you know he doesn't have to, but he wants to. All of those things when you come to God, of course. But you come and you ask some basic questions of what you read. The way that I studied the Bible, the way I was taught to study the Bible consists of three parts. Observation, i.e. what does it say? Interpretation, what does it mean? And application, what does it mean to me? How do I apply this to my life? Now, to do the observation, I would say eighty-five percent of all Bible study is observation. What does it actually say? What does it say? And then the other fifteen percent is interpretation and application. Observation, then, write some things down if you would. Observation, who, what, where, when, why and how? Who is it about? What are they doing? Where are they? When was it? How are they doing what they're doing? How am I supposed, how were they supposed to do what they were doing? And why? Why? Why are they supposed to do it? Why are they there? What's the content of the passage that you're reading? What's going on in there? What, what, what's the, the main point of the passage that you're reading? Ask the questions. When you ask the questions, who's speaking? Who's he speaking to? What is he saying? How is he saying it? Why is he saying it? What's the result of him saying it? What's the result of him doing this? Just keep asking the questions, asking the questions. And what's going to happen when you ask all those questions? Is that you have to read the same passage over and over and over again. And what that will mean is that you will remember what you're reading and that you will start to see things you wouldn't see if you read it only once. So observation, four main points, what, the five W's and an H, they call it. Who, what, where, when, why and how? Ask those questions. What, and then what is the content of this passage? What, what is it mainly about? And are there any contrasts in there? Is he contrasting one thing with another thing? Or is he comparing one thing with another thing? What, what's going on there? For example, the parable of the sower, you know, and, and who, who's, who's talking? Well, Jesus is talking. What's, what's he saying? Well, he's, he's saying a parable. Well, look, what, what's, what's a parable? Write that down. And then what's that parable consist of? And, and are there any contrasts in there or comparisons? And when he gives the meaning a little bit later, can I see how he's compared and, and what, what he's contrasted? And then what are they doing? You know, where are they going? And why are they going there? And, and who's following them? And what's being said? And what's the tone? What's happening? What's happening all around? What's going on in this account? And quite honestly, if you don't spend the majority of your time asking the questions and just seeing what is written, you will miss the correct interpretation or application. Eighty-five percent of Bible study is actually slowing down enough to read and ask the questions. What I did in the beginning and what I still sometimes do if I'm reading a tricky passage is that I'll take each one of those who, what, where, when, why and how questions and I will read it and ask the what or the who. Let's say the who. I'll read the whole chapter or half a chapter or paragraph, whatever it is, and I'll ask the who question. And then I'll go back and I'll ask the what question. And then I'll go back and read it again and ask the where and then the when and then the why and then the how. And by the time I've done that, I've read that passage six times at least. And when you read something six times, it's hard to miss stuff in there. And so what you actually find is you're starting to put together really a, a kind of good understanding of what's actually going on. You haven't got to interpret it yet. You're just going to see actually what's going on. For example, I mean, um, in the historical narratives, that's really, it's an easy one, isn't it? Well, you know, um, it, the Israelites coming out of Egypt, what happens? Well, Pharaoh chases them and then they get to the Red Sea and then they're stuck. And then they're stuck between the army and the sea and what's going to happen? And oh, yes, God does a miracle and opens up the sea and through they go. And then he closes up the sea and all of the Pharaoh's armies. And you don't have to make any application to that. You don't have to interpret it. You simply have to know that it's going on and you know who's involved in it by asking the who question. And you know what happens by asking the what question. I mean, and it's, it is really simple and I know it's simple. And you're probably thinking, really? Really? Because that's what I thought in the beginning. I thought, I, I mean, I am so much more intelligent than this. I don't need to do these things. I don't need to ask this. It wasn't quite as bad as that, but you know what I mean? I, I want to just take one verse in John, chapter seven, verse one. John seven, verse one. "After these things, Jesus was walking in Galilee; for he was unwilling to walk in Judea, because the Jews were seeking to kill him." Okay. Who is this about? Well, this is about Jesus. And who else? The Jews that were seeking to kill him. So it's about Jesus and some at least of the Jews. Where, where is it? Galilee. Why is it not in Judea? Well, because the Jews were seeking to kill him there. When was this? Well, while Jesus was still alive and after they, the Jews had started wanting to get rid of him. Did Jesus choose to li- to walk in Galilee or, or did they make him walk in Galilee? Well, he chose to walk in Galilee. He was unwilling to walk in Judea. So it's very simple. Why was he unwilling? Because they wanted to kill him. You know, that's, that's really simple in that verse. Now, just multiply that verse by the whole of chapter seven. Break it up into, into paragraphs and then ask the questions of the text. And what will happen is you will start to be able to put together a, a list of things about the who and a list of things about the what and a list of things about the when. Well, maybe not a list of the whens, but, um, you know what I mean? And you'll be able to build up a picture of what's going on and why and who's involved and where are they and when's it happening? And as I say, if you don't spend the time on that, you will not get the interpretation and the application. Eighty-five percent of Bible study is observation. That means you have to spend time reading. Read, write lists, mark words if you have to, whatever it is. So then the second stage, interpretation. What did it mean for the original readers? What did this, this John's gospel mean for those who read it first? What do these words mean in the original language? So that I can understand what certain, certain things mean that might mean differently in our time. Take the word sharp in our dictionary, sharp. What does sharp mean? Write down on your paper if you're taking notes. What does the word sharp mean? What have you written down? Have you written pointed? Have you written cutting? Have you written snazzy dresser? Have you written clever? Quick? What have you written? Because the word sharp means all those things. Take the word trunk. What does the word trunk mean? What do you think of when you, when I say trunk? Maybe you think of an elephant's trunk? Maybe you think of a trunk of a tree? Maybe you think of a huge suitcase that you might take on a, on a cruise? The word trunk means different things depending on the sentence in which it's found. And can you imagine then that the words you're reading now in, in the scripture, in their original language might have meant something slightly different? So it's important to slow down, to look at the actual words that are written, to, to look at a word like, uh, for example, what, what might words mean in, what words might we see in, in scriptures? We might see grace. We might see faith. We might see discipline. We might see, um, worthy. We might see worship. Look at the word worship in Hebrew and see what it means. Look at the word worship in Greek and see what it means. What did it mean to them? What did it mean when God wrote it? And then come back to your understanding of what worship means and change your understanding of what it means, determined by what the original language meant. And to do that, as I say, you have to slow down. You have to slow down and think about what did God actually say? What were the actual words he used? And do I know what they mean? Or do I just think that I know what they mean? You've got to look carefully, as I said, from trunk and sharp, words can have different meanings depending on how they're used. And then of course, the final one, application. What, what should I do with what I learned? What, what, what can I apply to myself? How can I apply this to myself? "God's word is living and active and sharper than any two-edged sword and able to judge through the, cut through the heart, the, and judge the thoughts and the intentions of the heart. God's word never returns void," I said. God's word has purpose. It, 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 God's word has life. God's word enlightens. God's word is, uh, what we said from Psalm one, one, one nine, uh, one oh nine. You know, it's, it's precepts are sure. Its judgments are sweet. God's word has so much in it. So I have to at least know what the, what the word meant before I can apply it to myself. What is emphasized? What is emphasized in a chapter or a section of scripture? What verbs are used? Are they past tense, present tense, future tense? Is there an instruction that I have to follow or something I must do? When I'm coming to the application for myself and I'm reading scripture, especially perhaps in the letters that are, that are written in the New Testament. If I'm reading those letters that are written to the church generally, uh, you know, what instructions are there? What, what, what must I do? What is it telling me God will do? What is it promising me God will do? All of those things, I'm only going to see if I slow down enough and ask the questions. Who, what, where, when and how? Okay. Ephesians, chapter one, verse three. I quote this verse a lot and, um, and I just want to ask you some questions. I'm not going to go on for too much longer, but I am going to go a little bit longer and then I'm going to give you some homework and I really hope you do it because there's not much point in doing this if you don't do the homework. So, um, Ephesians, chapter one, verse three. Ephesians, one, verse three. "Blessed be the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, who has blessed us with every spiritual blessing in the heavenly places in Christ." Okay, just that verse. Who? Who is this verse about? It's about God. And it's about us. Well, we don't know it's us actually because we don't know that we're part of us. But it's about, it's about God, who is the father of our Lord Jesus Christ and is about somebody called us or a group of people called us. And from this one verse, we don't know if we're included in that. It's not until we get down a bit further that we'll be able to work that out. But just for now, it's about God. And then what, what do we learn about God from that verse? He is the father of the Lord Jesus Christ. And what about this us? You know, we don't know who they are exactly, except probably from chapter, uh, verse one, we can say to the saints who are at Ephesus and who are faithful in Christ Jesus. So to the believers in Ephesus and, uh, who are called saints and who are faithful in Christ Jesus, blessed be the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ. So for those people in Ephesus that this letter was being written to, Jesus was our Lord Jesus Christ. He was their Lord. God is the father of their Lord and Lord Jesus was their Lord. And what has God done? What has been done? He's been, he's blessed us. God has blessed us. With what? With every spiritual blessing. Where? In the heavenly places. In Christ. When? What verb is used here? "Blessed be the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, who has blessed us with every spiritual blessing in the heavenly places in Christ." It's been done. God has blessed us already, past tense. Who are the us? Well, they're certainly the, the saints and faithful in Christ Jesus in chap- in verse one. But as we go down in Ephesians, you will see that, um, who the us are, if you read verse thirteen, "In him you also, after listening to the message of truth, the gospel of your salvation, having also believed, you were sealed in him with the Holy Spirit of promise." So from verse one all the way down to verse thirteen and fourteen, what Paul is going to do, who wrote this letter? He's going to describe what God has done to those who have put their trust, who have believed the gospel in the Lord Jesus. And, um, that's actually going to be part of the homework. I didn't know if we'd have time for it, but I went on too long, as I always do in the beginning. So, um, what I'd like you to do, um, this coming week is to look at Ephesians, chapter one, verse one to fourteen and ask the questions that I just told you. Who, what, where, when, why and how? And every time you'll ask one of those questions, who, read the whole fourteen verses and make a list. So the first verse of Ephesians, chapter one, says, "Paul, an apostle of Christ Jesus by the will of God." So the first person, the first answer to the who is Paul. So in those fourteen verses, make a list of everything you learn about Paul. And then the second name that you get is Christ Jesus. In those fourteen verses, write a list of everything you learn about Jesus. And then by the will of God. So in those fourteen verses, what do you learn about God? And then to the saints who are at Ephesus and who are faithful in Christ Jesus. So the saints, the recipients of the letter. What do you learn about them? Now, you, you've already got one, two, three, four lists going on just to answer the who. Who is this about? It's about Paul. It's, who's mentioned? Paul, Jesus, God and the saints at Ephesus. And then ask the question, you know, what do I learn about Paul here? What do I learn about Jesus? What do I learn about Jesus? What do I learn about God? What do I learn about the saints? Who's done what to whom? Where is this going on? Where is this letter going? It's going to Ephesus. When is it going? Well, it's going in Paul's lifetime because he wrote this letter. So I know that that's sometime between AD thirty-five-ish and AD sixty-five. Because that's, I know that, that that's the time that Paul ministered. So, so think about it. Think, just, just go to the text and re, ask the questions. And I, I want to show you my Bible only because, um, I mark it in color. I know that's sacrilege to some people, so I'm really sorry if you don't do it. But I mark my Bible in color. So I ask the questions and as I'm asking the questions, I mark what I see. And because, you know, um, I don't all make my lists here usually. Some of them I make in the, in the sidebar, but mostly I make my lists on separate pieces of paper because, um, it'd be just too much writing on my Bible. And so, um, I already did the Ephesians one, uh, one to 14. And I had marked some things and I'm going to give you hints because it's the first time you've done it. So what I did was I went through and I did the who, the what, and where are they? And, and then I wrote repeated words or phrases. I wanted to notice repeated words or phrases. And that's easy because I had to read it something like 10, 15 times. So you start to see the repeated words and the repeated phrases. And there are two, um, well, there are three actually, but two of them could link together. There are two main repeated phrases. One is in him or in Christ. And the other is according to either the kind intention of his will or according to his will. That's two of them. There is another repeated phrase, which I'm not going to tell you in there. And, um, it'd be really good if you could find it and mark it and learn and write down what you learn about it. Because if a word is repeated or if a phrase is repeated, it's surely important. So in, for example, in those 14 verses, the phrase in Christ or in him is used one, two, three, four, five, six, at least six times, maybe more. So you know, that's an important phrase. What, what do you learn about that? What do you learn about that phrase? What is that phrase telling you? And so in the homework, what do you learn about Jesus? From Ephesians, chapter one, one to 14. What do you learn about God? What do you learn about the believers in Ephesus? And what do you learn about yourself? Because you are someone who has heard the gospel. You are someone who's been given a pledge. The Holy Spirit has given us a pledge. You are someone who has received the Holy Spirit. So what do you learn about yourself from the first 14 verses of Ephesians? So, um, yeah, I had lots more to say, but I'll say it next week, that's okay. And I won't do so much preamble maybe next week. So, um, uh, yeah, I think we'll stop there. Yes, so actually I'll just say one more thing. When you're doing the Ephesians, one, one through 14, ask the who, what, where, when, why, and how questions. Make the lists of, of the who's and, and what's going on and, and the repeated phrases. And whether they're past tense or future tense or now, present tense, you know, look at the verbs and how they're written. And then ask yourself the question, why did Paul write to the church at Ephesus? Why did he write to them? What do you think God wanted them to know? Because God is the author of scripture. He wrote, he's told Paul, inspired Paul with what to write. And so, um, God wanted the believers in Ephesus to know some things. What did he want them to know? And what do you think he wants you to know? From those 14 verses in Ephesians, chapter one? Yeah. So the homework, actually, I'm going to put online. So if you look at it, um, and so it's not just Ephesians, one, one to 14, because that would be just too easy. I would also like you to do Colossians, one, verse nine to 12. I'll put it online so you'll see. Ask the same questions. Who, what, where, when, why, how? Look for repeated words and phrases and make a list of what you see. I'll show you, I'll give you a bit of a clue because I've done that too. This was my, the Colossians, one, nine through 12 is a prayer, Paul prays for the Colossians. And I actually wrote, and I wanted to do it in a circle, but I knew I wouldn't be able to show you a circle. So I started at the top and I went down that way and I went up that way. And I made some colored arrows to show what linked to what. And, and what you'll get to when you do that is you will have a really good understanding of what Paul prayed for the Colossians, why he prayed it, and what God would do through what Paul prayed for them. And what, yeah. So, um, when we come back next week, uh, if, if you want to email me, by the way, just email me through desiringtruth@icloud.com. If you've got any questions, ask the questions. Yeah, I'd be very happy to go through it. But basically from session one, remember, every single time you pick up the Bible, ask questions of what you read. Who, what, where, when, why, and how? Ask those questions. Look for repeated words and phrases and mark them. And then make lists of everything you've looked at. Make lists of who it's about, what they're doing, where they are, why they're doing it. Make lists of any promises or instructions. Make lists of, of, of repeated words and phrases. Interrogate the text. Interrogate the text so as if, as if it's a document on which your life depends. And because actually the, the fullness of your life depends on this document. Because the Lord will speak to you through it in a really mighty way. Ephesians is a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful letter. It is full of such fantastic stuff about God and about us. That's why I've chosen it. And, um, yeah, so please do do the homework. And as I say, if you've got any questions, uh, email me through desiringtruth.icloud.com and, um, I'll, I will answer them. If you've got any questions now, uh, I'm around. Yeah. And, um, thank you for listening. So Father, thank you for this time. Thank you that you, um, thank you for this way that we can access the scriptures. Help us, Lord, to do it. Lord, I pray that, uh, there's nobody here who was like me and thought that they, it was too silly for them or too ridiculous, or they, they were too far above this to do it. I pray, Lord, that you would, um, remind us that we are all like sheep. And that, uh, and that sheep need a lot of help and a lot of, um, guidance. And help us, Father, to see that all of these things that you are speaking to us in scripture are all for our benefit, all for our good. Help us to really want to access them. For, because we love you and because we want to know how you love us. And I thank you, Lord, because you will give us understanding. In Jesus' name, amen.